Good evening and calling the meeting to order. Welcome to the West Hartford Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. It is Wednesday, November the fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Amani, may you please call the roll?
Mr. Gagnon?
Present.
Mr. Goldman?
Here.
Dr. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Nasserella?
Present.
Ms. Merriman?
Here.
Dr. Tarmas Farquison?
Here.
Mrs. Yagaloff?
Present.
Bridget Feeny?
Here.
Kayla Ja?
Here.
Thank you. And Kayla, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And there is a proposed revision to the agenda order. I would like to make a motion that we move Section seven, referring to the financial report, to go before new business, specifically the appropriations of non-lapsing unexpendable education funds account to the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six. So again, making a motion to move the financial report to precede new business. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Discussion? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? The ayes have it. Thank you for your flexibility. Now we shall proceed to public communications. This is where we're able to hear from you, your thoughts, your questions, your suggestions, your concerns. Each individual is allowed three minutes to speak. We ask when you go to the podium to please share your name and your town of residence. Please be mindful of Amani, who will hold up a yellow card when you have one minute remaining in your time. And when your time has expired, we ask for you, please, to conclude your sentence and respectfully take your seat. Please also be aware that we are attentively listening to what is being shared. However, it is policy that we do not respond to comments as they are being made. I first also want to make us aware of what the agenda items are for this evening. However, we are receiving comments on any topic. But for this evening, the agenda includes revision of Policies twelve forty, nineteen hundred and fifty-five sixty as a second reading, appropriation of non-lapsing unexpendable education funds account, adoption of educational specifications for partial roof replacement at Brayburn Elementary School, enrollment in class size, approval of financial report period ending September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, and approval of minutes from the October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five Board of Education meeting. I will start by those who've signed up to speak on agenda items. However, I see a name here, but then there's a, an X. I don't know if that's a decorative piece or...
I don't know if that's intentional because we now shall call on Heather to come, please.
Right over there, yes.
Okay, hello, everyone. My name is Heather Ryan. I'm from Berlin, Connecticut. I'm a grad student at Central Connecticut State University, and I'm in the school counseling program. So I have an assignment to advocate for something meaningful to me. And after reviewing the restorative practice response policy, I find this to be very meaningful to me as I will be working as a school counselor in a school in the future. And I want what's best for our students, and I really value what this policy represents. It focuses on helping students take responsibility for their actions, repairing harm, and rebuilding relationships instead of relying only on punishment. Traditional punishment approaches obviously aren't working very well. Students might face consequences for their actions where they aren't always taught how to take accountability and address the behaviors that keep happening. So they just are going to keep happening over and over again unless something is done about it. Restorative practices give students the tools to understand their impact and make better choices moving forward. Data will also be collected and tracked to make sure these practices are being used fairly and consistently for all students. So not only will this make sure that all students are treated equally, especially students of color and students with disabilities, but this will also be good to show that the policy is working, and you'll be able to see if it's actually making an impact. And yeah, overall, I think that every student deserves a chance to be heard and to make things right and to grow. And that's exactly what restorative practices make possible. So I just wanted to come up here and show my support for the policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Now she'll go to the next list, and I'll just read based on the order they are written. And I will apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name. Please charge it to my head and not my heart. We have Stephanie Corsi-T, please.
Very short. Hi, I'm Stephanie Corsi-Travalli. I live in West Hartford. I'm a parent of an elementary school student. Children are being read to in class by YouTube videos or disembodied bots instead of by their teachers, with teachers saying they don't have enough money to buy actual books. Nearly a dozen paraprofessional positions remain unfilled at the elementary schools. The dismal pay for these roles make them unattractive to qualified applicants. Children in first grade receive tickets for good behavior that they can trade in for even more screen time on an iPad while at school. Unauthorized users break into district-approved apps while our children are learning off of them. If this sounds like a near-future dystopia, it's not. This is what is currently happening right here in West Hartford, in our elementary schools. It is. We parents are noticing the slow creep of screen time and AI-enabled gameified technology into our schools with little transparency on how these apps are being used, if they improve outcomes, and what work has been done into verifying the safety and privacy features of these apps. You may have seen the widely-reported news that nationwide, reading scores are abysmal. While the adoption of AI-enabled tools to teach our children an overall amount of time on screens, particularly in schools, has soared. We are concerned about the safety and efficacy of these tools and believe that too little consideration is being given to the risks of AI. For example, its biases, its tendency to hallucinate, and how it is being engineered for maximum engagement similar to social media. West Hartford's new AI policy encourages staff and teachers to adopt and support the use of AI in the classroom, while parents are concerned that our town is taking the cheaper way out by paying for tech at the expense of validated physical resources, such as physical books and more teachers and support staff. Extrapolate these current spending trends to their logical conclusion, and we can easily imagine a future of haves and have-nots in our education system. The haves continue to be educated by highly-qualified human educators who teach not only math, science, and history, but foster human connection and teach children to care for each other and problem-solve within their community. The have-nots will be on screens all day, educated by AI bots, and receive little to no human interaction. Human skills will suffer. We've read Jonathan Hates the Anxious Generation, and we know what happens when kids are on screens and social media all day. The book's title says it all. Please don't allow this generation of children to be the guinea pigs for even more screen time and technology that even its creators struggle to understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Heather Ryan. Oh, yep, we heard from Heather, yes. Okay. All right. Yes, thank you. Next, we have Shayna Quinn.
Hi, I'm Shayna Quinn of West Hartford, here to offer my two cents about the topic of instructional technology alongside some other parents tonight. My perspective comes from eighteen years as a certified English teacher with eleven years' teaching experience at a Connecticut public high school. I also hold a master's degree in educational technology. This topic is near and dear to my heart. I'm lucky to have the time now to volunteer in a school library shelving books. And today, I witnessed a lesson that seamlessly blended high-tech, a data projector with graphics and sound effects, with the low-tech as the teacher librarian read from a story about the beauty of baking rye bread in honor of Native American Heritage Month. The story enchanted these fourth graders as sizzling sounds enhanced the librarian's read-aloud. Next, students use paper and pencils to note sensory details from the book, followed by the opportunity to illustrate and write about a cooking tradition from their own lives. It was a lovely lesson to witness. I also witnessed a research lesson that began with a read-aloud, followed by a chance for first-grade students to conduct online research at their own pace using Pebble Go and a set of headphones. Students took notes using pencil and paper on what they learned about bats. I regularly receive links to my fourth grader's quest projects, and she and her groupmates collaborate and produce them together. I share these anecdotes, only a fraction of what happens around the district each day, I'm sure, to emphasize the importance of balance when it comes to tech use. When used thoughtfully, technology enhances learning and accessibility, but it's a matter of quality and context when using those tools. High-tech tools must be implemented into the curriculum using a balanced, hybrid approach in conjunction with low-tech strategies. The yin with the yang. Blended learning environments where digital tools complement in-person interaction lead to higher student engagement and achievement. It is possible for schools to maintain both efficiency and human connection with intentional instructional design. This brings me to my point. Based on the district's Department of Information Technology website, there is only one full-time educational technology specialist in the entire district. And that individual, if I'm not mistaken, also runs the district website. There must be experienced educators working daily alongside administrators, specialists, classroom teachers to design, revise, and successfully implement research-based curriculum of tech integration across all disciplines, from pre-K to twelfth and into post-secondary. And it's not just about computer science and AI. I realize there is currently the Envision CS team of teachers working diligently to build a scope and sequence regarding computer science skills, but those team members have other teaching priorities first. I encourage the board to consider the implications of this disjointed organizational structure of the ed-tech professionals within the district and how it impacts the quality of our digital literacy curriculum in town. Technology, in its myriad of iterations, touches every single student in town in some way every single day. I also encourage the district to conduct an audit of how much time a typical student, elementary, middle, and high, spends on the computer each day. A cohesive educational technology department would allow the district to streamline its mission, its curriculum, and ultimately strengthen student learning outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Daniel.
Hi, I'm Daniel, and I know I was gonna do it about heat chat, but so I wanted to just come on here. I don't have a speech or anything. I go to KP, and I'm from West Hartford, WHPS. I just wanted to come on here and raise a concern about class sizes because, so my language arts class size has a lot of kids, my seventh grade. It's like, it's a lot. And instead of like having people running around like wild rats, like I think it would be better if people had like individualized experience through literacy. And as you said, like on technology, people can do that, but it's not the same as having an actual teacher that is giving students individualized time. And I think like small groups and stuff do that, but I think it's not enough, and that teachers need to do more of that. So I just wanted to come on here and say that. And I think the class sizes are affecting it because I think it's not all the teachers' fault. But I think the class sizes, like A, it's a fire hazard, and B, it's hard for the kids to focus when there's so many kids. And one person's talking to their friend, and the other person is doing this and that. And then the teachers have to deal with it, and then they don't have time to teach. And then it's a whole thing. Like on Wednesdays, like we have thirty minutes of time, and it's hard to implement everything we want to do into thirty minutes, especially when, again, people are running around like wild animals. So I just wanted to come on here. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all who we have signed up on the list. However, we'll see if there's anyone else in the audience who would like to make a public comment. Yes, please, come to the podium. And again, share your name and town of residence, please.
Hi, my name is, I'm Laura Yeager. I live in West Hartford. I have two kids who are in school in town, middle school and elementary. I kind of want to piggyback off what Daniel was talking about with class size and give a couple specifics. So my kids have had some really amazing resources through the town, and I have mostly just so much gratitude. I have a son who went to Bugbee, and then it was recommended he go to Morley for behavior reasons. And the experience has been, in general, fantastic. So Morley and Brayburn have programs where kids with behavior issues get sent to that school from other areas. And so students are coming with all sorts of needs and have access to a social worker and a learning center. The last few years, up until third grade, the class size, I think, has been fantastic. Fourth and fifth grade takes three classes and puts them into two. And so we went from a class of around sixteen, which is amazing, to close to twenty-five this year. At Morley, where there are students coming from other schools with behavior issues, it's a lot for one teacher to have nonverbal students, autistic students, kids with behavior issues, all sorts of things in a class of twenty-five. I would really ask the board to consider capping the limit, twenty-three, something that allows teachers to do what they need to do with the students. That's my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Ariadna, and I'm also a resident of West Hartford. And I now have two elementary, elementary school students. I'm also really concerned about class size, and I had a similar experience with my older daughter, who went from a class of sixteen to now twenty-three. They're not getting quite as much attention. And what I'm actually really concerned about is the guidelines, as I understand them, that for the older classes, the guidelines are up to twenty-eight children per class. And I don't know when the last time that these guidelines were revised, but from my research, it's sometime in the eighties. I don't think that's in line with a lot of the competitive school districts. And I really do think that this needs to be taken under consideration. I don't think that people who choose to live in this town, choosing, most of us are choosing to live here because we really value public school education, regardless of what other options might be available to us. We are choosing to be part of the public school system, and that's why we are here. So again, to echo what Laura said, I'd really urge you to consider revising those guidelines and inviting public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? I'll ask again. Anyone else who would like to make a public comment? And one last time. Okay, we shall pause on public communication. Now, moving on to non-staff communication and reports, and this is where we're able to hear from our student representatives what's going on within their schools. So Bridget, will you please share with us what is going on at Connord?
Of course. Hello, everyone, and happy November. Connord's Veterans Day celebration and flag dedication will be next Tuesday, November eleventh. So if you're interested in attending, please contact Ms. Tamborella Nobel, the principal. As part of these events, we will be regarding the, reading the names of Connord veterans and honoring our veterans through a flag-raising ceremony. If you're a veteran connected to Connord or know a veteran connected to Connord, make sure you email Ms. Tamborella Nobel to be included. Also, a big thank you to the Connord PTO for organizing this event. Moving on to the sports section, Connord's girls swim and dive took first place at the CCC West Championship, defeating Hall and other schools. And today, girls' field hockey plays against Hamden, so we wish some luck. This Friday, you'll see Connord football has a home game this Friday at six, and we hope to see you there. For the language section, Ms. Martin's intermediate Spanish language class walked to Wicket Park on October twenty-seventh to examine the connection between nature and happiness. They participated in forest bathing, which is a Japanese practice of observing nature with all five senses, excluding taste, of course. Students were able to reflect on the impact of walking through the forest and spending time with their classmates on their levels of happiness. And students will use their observations gathered during this excursion to complete their end-of-unit assessment in the coming weeks. Moving on to our blood drive, Connord experienced a huge success with our Halloween blood drive, obtaining forty pints of blood from donors. We are looking forward to even more donors at our spring blood drive on March thirteenth. And Connord's home-tuning dance theme has been announced. It is Tangled. Tickets sales open today, and we are very excited to dance the night away right here in Town Hall on the twenty-first of November. For the arts section, Connord Drama had a successful sold-out run for our fall play, Good Kids. And we're now getting ready for the Ten Minute Play Festival, featuring ninety Connord students, twenty student directors, and more than seventy actors. This festival happens the week before Thanksgiving and is always a highlight for our year. Connord's music program also had an exciting last Wednesday. Select concert groups were excited to play their first concert of the year, Autumn Falls. Many people showed up to support our exceptionally talented musicians and appreciate their skills. Connord's improv troupe has their first show tomorrow at the Black Box at seven, and we look forward to seeing their first performance. And both Connord and Hall guitar students will pursue a Roots to Branches program, a collaborative experience involving a field trip to the Folk Americana Roots Hall of Fame. The goal in this experience is to share with the students the diverse cultures contributing to the history of music and art. Students will be given the ability to explore their sense of belonging and identity and appreciate the history of music. And finally, congratulations to Jessica Fallis, our Connecticut Art Education, Connecticut Art Education Association Secondary Art Educator of the Year. We are so grateful to have her at our school and happy to have her as one of our amazing educators. Oh, and one last thing. Thank you to Laura Stack, Gretsch Leibitz, and the West Hartford Prevention Council for bringing Laura Stack of Johnny's Ambassadors to Connord. Thank you to Mr. Torfix Fisk and all the student organizers from Sandy Hook Save Club in West Hartford. Thank you for listening to Connord's updates.
And thank you for sharing them. Kayla, will you please share what is going on at Hall?
Good evening. I am happy to back, to be back with another update from Hall. On Sunday, November second, student council members volunteered at the West Hartford Community Block Party, which took place in the Town Hall parking lot. The event drew a large crowd that enjoyed a variety of activities and entertainment and was successful in strengthening connections among residents. Hall students were proud to be part of it and helped the event run smoothly. The fall formal dance will take place this Saturday, November eighth, at the Town Hall with a masquerade theme. Planning committees have been working hard to sell tickets, obtain raffle prizes, and finalize decorations. Next Wednesday, November twelve, Hall will hold its college commitment ceremony. The event honors any Hall senior committing to play a division sport, and it's an opportunity to recognize the hard work of our student athletes. A second ceremony will take place in the spring. Later this week, on Thursday and Friday, Hall will hold its Titan Award ceremony. The Titan Award recognizes outstanding students who exemplify the qualities outlined in the vision of their graduate, such as collaboration. There were so many outstanding recipients that the ceremony was expanded to two days. On the sports side, several teams are finishing strong at state tournaments. Field hockey, for example, is competing with an away game against Greenwich this week, and football will face Manchester this Friday. Hall is also busy with music events, with the annual Veterans Day concert next week, where students will perform in a concert for local veterans after luncheon. Furthermore, on Saturday, November sixteen, at the St. James Church, there will be a fall showcase presented by select orchestra groups, Solisti and Camerata, featuring performances by the Hall choraleers and Connord solo choir. There will be two shows at three and seven PM. Finally, in the theater department, auditions are underway for the Black Box winter play, Lord of the Flies. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both, Kayla and Bridget. You continue to represent well in so many things going on. Wonderful. Thank you so very much. Now let us move on to unfinished business, where we have revised policies as a second reading. Seeking a motion, rather, there is a motion by Lorna Thomas-Farquesson, Jason Gagnon, and Gail Harris that the Board of Education accept as a second and final reading the following revised policies, which were reviewed by the Board Policy Subcommittee, those being Policy twelve forty, Visitors and Observations in Schools, and nineteen hundred, School Security and Safety. I am going to propose that we do one at a time. So first, seeking a motion regarding Policy twelve forty, Visitors and Observations in Schools. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Suck up.
Thank you, Gail. Discussion. And so again, teammates, this policy came before us before as a first reading, and this is the time now for us to continue discussion and then proceed to a vote. So with discussion being open, please share your thoughts. Well, Jason.
Guess I'll get the, I was on anyways, so. So as I understand it, and as we've talked about this over the past few weeks, as we talked about in the policy committee, this, along with the other policy, you read them kind of in tandem, really is guidance coming from our legal counsel in terms of compliance with recent state laws, recent direction coming from the governor's office on how to deal with law enforcement, most in particular ICE, and how we best comply with federal law. And it's really giving guidance to, to schools on what to do, who should be making the decisions when someone shows up, and making sure we follow the proper procedures.
Thank you. Summarized well. Thoughts, other thoughts or comments? And if there are none, we'll proceed to a vote. Oh, Ethan.
I'll go with the thoughts. We're absolutely, my first, my question was, and I realize this is coming from the state, it stresses federal immigration when I read it. Is there any other federal organization that we're afraid of coming in the door?
I think for us, and, you know, I don't know that I'd use the word afraid. I think for, for this policy, it's really more about just making sure we have our practices and policies all aligned. And, you know, I think Jason did a nice job of summarizing that, but it's essentially if someone comes to the school, even if it's, you know, not necessarily on a federal level, but even on a local level, right? Where we may have an officer come to the school, someone coming to serve a subpoena, whatever that would be, is we want to make sure we've got that process outlined, that it's handled appropriately, and that the person that's dealing it knows how to handle that.
I understand. My issue, as I said before, was it is only, as I read it, focused on immigration. It's, and it just seems like if you said a federal authority period, state authority period, but we have to say federal immigration. I realize it's coming from the state, and we have no choice, but I'm still going to vote no because to me, you're asking people to do. Well, let me add one last question, which I don't know if you know the answer to. Is, is this a violation of federal law?
No, again, oh, sorry, go ahead, Jason.
Again, no, it's not. Again, it's about complying with federal law. So I think there's an interesting dichotomy about voting no on this, which would be kind of violating state law when this policy is intended to comply with federal law, right? And any, any federal agent who comes to the school would have to have a proper warrant, be it administrative or judicial. We want to make sure we have the right personnel in place who can actually address that, know what they're looking at. And the fact that it's a call-out from ICE right now, I think, one, And the fact that it's a call-out from ICE right now, I think, one, the state is telling us we need to do this, but two, I think it's really appropriate. West Hartford PD is not coming to places masked and separating families. I mean, that's really what this is trying to address, is the immediate concern. So it's compliance with state law, it's compliance with federal law, and I don't think it could be more timely or topical. There's a real concern out there among -- I heard this, we just all got off the campaign trail. You know, there's real concern with families out there about these types of things happening. And I think if we could give them comfort, if we can give proper guidance to our teachers and our administrators, then I think all the better, and we should vote for this.
I go back and say, I'm just uncomfortable because I feel, it goes back to what I learned years ago in the military. You don't obey unlawful order. My concerns were giving unlawful orders. I don't know. I just, it seems to me it singles out. If it just said, "Federal authority," said, "State authority," I get it. It doesn't say that. It says immigration, so, done.
Well, I need to know what you think is unlawful about this, because I think that's a fairly serious accusation. So what exactly about this do you think is unlawful? Because it's not saying, "Don't comply with federal law." It's saying, "Here's what you do to comply with federal law." So I don't want the implication out there that we're telling folks not to comply with federal law.
What is the outcome after they do this?
The outcome after they do this is ICE has to show up with the proper warrants. It's going to go to the administrator in charge of the building. As I understand it, their first call is going to be to Giulio or someone else at Central, and they're going to walk through how best to comply. How far into the building does their subpoena get them access?
And why do we assume that federal government or the ICE will be doing this illegally?
No, that's not -- no one's saying they're doing it illegally. It's who's going to look at the warrant and say, "This is what --" First of all, there are different kinds of warrants, right? You can have an administrative warrant, or you can have a judicial warrant. They get you different access to certain facilities. So the idea is, they show up, and somebody has had some training, someone has had some discussions about who gets to look at this and decide, "Okay, this is appropriate. You can come into X area, or you're allowed to do Y while you're on our property." I don't see anything wrong with giving those folks in those buildings that knowledge and those resources to fully comply, because you can get into a lot of trouble if you let people into the building and give them, you know, grounds that they're not allowed to be on.
Can I -- that was going to be a point that I wanted to bring up, because the administrative team has had appropriate training. As I think Jason's describing, some of the differences and some of the aspects of that training in terms of what to look for in a subpoena, to make sure that we're doing two things. Number one, we have a very clear responsibility to follow, you know, all applicable laws. So if someone's coming into our schools, whether they're local, state, or federal, we want to make sure we're providing them every courtesy and we're doing the right thing, so we're not getting ourselves in trouble. But then, number two, we want to make sure there's safeguards for the school district in general, that we don't do something unintentionally or out of good intent, like, "Oh, I see a person in a position of authority, and therefore I'm going to do something where maybe I've actually given up a responsibility. Maybe I've given access to a child, which a parent might then come in and have a legitimate complaint against the school district, because I did so out of a really lack of understanding of the law itself." So we have a process in place that basically says, and you as a board are directing, "Hey, school, teachers, all employees, you need to follow the process that the administration has put into place to ensure two things happen. Number one, we're safeguarding kids, not creating an uncomfortable situation for parents out of ignorance of the law. And number two, that the administrators and the people designated at the school who are knowledgeable about the law then follow that law completely to ensure that we're complying with, you know, valid warrants and all the rest." So to your point, and I respect your example, "Don't follow an unlawful order." The point being, it's like, the private might not always know that that was an unlawful order, so we want to make sure it gets kicked up the chain of command. That's really all that this policy is attempting.
So the question I have is, what is in the fourth paragraph that's not in the first three paragraphs? Because to me, the first three paragraphs seem to be pretty inclusive.
Yeah. I know that that's the call-out for ICE, which was the mandate from the State Department, and I think it was because, as has been mentioned, I think it's, regardless of any one person's opinion on it, it's a timely topic. It's a topic that's being debated in the public, and the state wanted to ensure that boards of education and school districts and school district employees were inclusive of that. So they called it out in this and basically mandated that language. So I respect what you're saying, that, you know, we've always followed this. This won't really be a change in practice for us, what we do at schools. It is a change in policy to comply with the timely notification, "Hey, all school districts, you need to make sure you're doing this."
I wouldn't have any problem with it if it just said, "Federal authorities, state authorities." It doesn't say that.
I saw Claire and then Shannon.
So since I started teaching in West Hartford in 1998, we've had police officers come to the building. They know the protocol, they buzz in, they go in, they show their ID, they show their badge, or they're known by the administrator, and that is who they deal with. And I think it's naive to think that ICE officers and things that are going on in our country right now are following regular procedure. And as a teacher, I respect any law enforcement person that comes to my building. But if an officer shows up with gear, with a mask, won't show their badge, doesn't want to buzz through the door, I want to have a policy that I can follow as an employee and make sure that the administrator is the first person that has interaction with that person. And it's a sad state of affair that we have to spell it out, but there is consistently, daily incidents where these law officers that you want to make an umbrella to include are not following the procedure that I felt safe in my school that all officers would follow. And so I think it does need to be spelled out, because the history and the protocol that we're facing right now is not following what I, as a teacher, would expect a law officer to follow.
Shannon?
I'm just going to layer on to what Claire said. I think it's called out explicitly because it is so timely in that this is uncharted, whatever you feel, as Paul said, about the way it's playing out. It's uncharted territory. Like, we haven't encountered these kinds of law enforcement officers coming into schools and other public places in the way that it's happening right now. So you just want to give people the guidance for how to handle that, so it's done in a way that observes due diligence, is lawful, so there is no way, a sentiment that this is unlawful. It's just giving guide -- guardrails for how to handle these situations, because I wouldn't know how to handle that if I didn't have training. And so I would want to know the chain of command, the proper order of operations, so that it's handled properly.
Gail?
Thanks. I have a question regarding what you said, Paul. So, I mean, I don't actually have a problem with this in general. What I worry about is, because this whole situation is fairly new, and it's not something that we're, you know, used to dealing with, I'm just curious if the opposite could be true, that these, that we have federal immigration authorities show up at a school, and how well are the people in our school actually trained to know what they're dealing with? I mean, I think Jason, you know, speaks very eloquently here. He also has a legal background. He probably understands a lot of this stuff, that I'm not sure, you know, people in the school system can decipher what kind of a subpoena they're looking at. And so I worry that this could go down the wrong way, because as well as the people are trained in our district, at the end of the day, they're not lawyers, and they don't deal with this stuff very often. So I just would be curious if you could speak to that a little bit, like--
No, absolutely. It's a great question.
-- that we don't end up in a, you know, a different cult situation, because people don't know what they're really dealing with.
So part of our training, and I asked Giulio to piggyback with any additional details, but part of our training early on in this process was to be able to provide to our principals who are, you know, going to, who are identified as our first points of contact at the building, they, you know, so anyone in the building who'd, you know, come across the situation would reach out to the principal. The principal would reach out to Giulio, and Giulio will also have the ability to reach out to other resources. But part of our initial training was very specifically to show, to show them the differences and to show real examples of, this is a judicial warrant versus this is an administrative warrant. And to clarify, because that question came up, and it came up early on, not necessarily here in West Hartford, but within some of the educational circles. Okay, so what is the protocol? You know, there were, there were people saying they were going to ban, you know, ICE officers from their school grounds or things like this, which were not legal actions. School grounds and school offices, you know, have a certain degree of public space, just as you or I or a family member can buzz to the office and say, "Hey, my name is so-and-so, and I'm here for this purpose," so can, so can a police officer, so can -- and that's the expectation. And so the involvement, the administrator, is intended to assure that we conform to that same standard operating procedure, come into the office, state your business, present identification. And the training, you know, to your point, have we had training, so we know what those differences are? We do. But there's a second layer to that. Let's say that I make a mistake. I'm not infallible. I look at that, I wasn't paying close enough attention during the training, or this administrative warrant looked different, or in real time, I just got nervous and I slipped up. The point being, we would want that slip-up to occur with the administrator and a full range of support, as opposed to at a teacher level. So at the end of the day, this whole policy is designed to provide protections and assurances of a procedure that's going to minimize, because Giulio and his team, they can do an in-depth training with 16 principals, as opposed to 900 teachers or an additional 500 paraeducators, you know what I mean? We want it to go through a channel that we can have the control, so that we can verify that we're doing everything the right way, and we're not, we're not then impeding an officer, nor are we providing access beyond, to a child, beyond what is a legal requirement.
And I'll just piggyback on that, because I think Paul said that really well, and, you know, and I think your point is a good one too, Gail, that things are changing all the time. And so, you know, for the principals, they know, "Just call me." They'll call me on my cellphone, and then I'll get someone that knows exactly what's going on, that knows the laws, and that they can tell us exactly, like, what is our obligation? Because I think, as Paul mentioned, we'd rather have that sit on my shoulders and the people that I can contact than it, you know, a teacher that happens to fall into that. And I think that's a lot more challenging for them.
Ethan?
One final set. So my biggest problem is, as I read the doc, this policy, in the fourth paragraph, it has three main points as I read it. The first is, "School will do in accordance with applicable law." Why would we not do that for anything? Why does it have to be particularly this? This administrator will follow the protocols outlined, school security. Again, I don't understand why it's focused on federal immigration, and then it defines federal immigration, which is nice, but not a policy.
I'm going to try to answer this way, because what, part of what you're saying, if I'm understanding you correctly, is, like, part of what's being said, you'll follow applicable policy and all the rest, like, why wouldn't you? There's, as things get tested, if someone were to do something incorrectly or to do something inappropriate, and then they were, you know, you get into a legal situation over that and a question of liability, and the person's defense is, "Well, I didn't know. No one ever told me," or, "There was no rule. I didn't know there was a rule about that." By virtue of you having a policy that says, "No, there's a rule, and you have to follow the rule. There's a procedure, and you have to follow the procedure," that's setting an expectation that protects you as a board, it protects us as a district, it protects us organizationally to say, "Hey, no, there's a defined way of doing things, and you need to follow that." So that whatever, you know, in any case where there's some transgression or something where someone's claiming that we either did an impediment, or we provided too much or whatever, we, you know, we can say, "Hey, no, there was supposed to be a following of a very specific protocol. Now show me the protocol, and let's explain what happened, and now let's compare what happened to what the protocol says to see if there's liability." I mean, so part of that's just legal support for ensuring things are done the right way. And sometimes you just have to put it out there. "Hey, there's a rule that's supposed to be followed in this situation, and we've established that rule, and now we've put it on to the administration to make sure that rule is trained, that rule is enforced, that rule is, you know, changes to it, are timely, revisions are made, all that kind of thing." So I think that's the best answer, as I understood your question.
I just got to be the thing that grabs.
I understand.
To me, it just could say federal authorities.
Your mic?
To me, it could just say, "Federal authorities," and be done.
The only thing, not to continue to beat a dead horse, but the only thing that I would add to that is, this is a group of people who have demonstrably shown that they are not behaving as normal authorities, federal, state, or otherwise. I mean, we've had instances in Connecticut where they have tased an immigrant, an asylum seeker, who is at a court hearing, tased him multiple times outside the chambers, and told the federal judge who came out to see what was going on that it was none of his business and to go back into his chambers. They're masked agents. We don't have masked agents in this country. So I think that this is demonstrably different and needs to be called out, if only to give added comfort to our teachers, staff, administrators, and, most importantly, families.
Can I respond? So I would want the same respect for authority and following the rule for them as I would want for us. So it should work for everybody. And I don't want to assume one group, it will be at fault, because my assumption is, most people are trying to do, or everybody's trying to do the, like to think everybody's trying to do the right thing. I realize there will be exceptions to the rule, but it goes back to that original, you don't obey unlawful commands, you don't give unlawful commands, and it happens.
That, to me, is the problem with this debate.
We're highlighting a group.
That doesn't make it unlawful. What the direct, what directions that we are giving to our administrators is unlawful, because I don't want that hanging out there, because that will be taken by someone to say that we are telling our administrators and staff to do something that is unlawful. And there is nothing in this provision that is unlawful. You may not like that it singles out ICE, but it's not telling us not to comply with proper warrants.
I don't like it singles out anybody. So this is a --
But that doesn't make it unlawful.
It just seems wrong.
That's different than unlawful. Wrong is an opinion. Unlawful is fact or not.
And so, Claire?
I'm just wondering, if you could imagine the scenario where there were food police going into kitchens at schools, and we had never seen this happen before, and all of a sudden, the staff wondered why these people were coming into the kitchen. So you might have to spell out, if there was a trend nationwide of food being inspected and people coming into buildings and trying to come into buildings and not showing their ID, wearing masks. So there's a current situation in our country right now where what we expect from law enforcement agents isn't being followed by, followed by one branch of the government. And so it's important for teachers to know that if someone shows up in a mask with military gear, won't show their ID, the principal needs to be contacted immediately, and do not interact, do not impede, do not have a problem with them, get the principal who is trained.
So can I respond? Third paragraph, beginning, "Upon arrival, all visitors and observers must comply with any and all applicable building security procedures," including, it goes on. But to me, that answers that question.
They're not following.
Then they're in violation.
And what do I do as a teacher?
Well, I assume you've already called your administrator.
Yes, what's the --
And that's a great segue, calling the administrator. And so with that--
That's what it says.
Correct, yes. Greatly appreciate the robust discussion here and the passion. This is important. This is why we have discussions. This is why it's important for us all to have a sense of what our thoughts are before we go into voting, because we do have plans to vote on this policy. I do want to just have a brief moment for us to just go up a level, because we've gotten quite granular in the details of this policy, which, again, is a part of the process. But as has been shared before, when it comes to visitors and observations in schools, that is a policy that has been in practice for quite some time. We've already had those pieces in place. What we are here to vote on is the addition of said section. I'm going to read it, because I want to make sure-- I'm going to read it, because I want to make sure that we have clarity and there's no ambiguity in what we're speaking about to be added to Policy 1240. And the piece, the substantive piece that we are looking to add reads, "In the event that a federal immigration authority appears in person at a school in the district or otherwise, contacts a school to request information in accordance with applicable law and pursuant to guidance to K through 12 public schools pertaining to immigration activities developed by the Connecticut State Department of Education, or CSDE, or any subsequent applicable CSDE guidance, such authority shall be directed to communicate with the administrator designated for such interactions, who will follow the protocols outlined in the school's security and safety plan. For purposes of this policy, a federal immigration authority means any officer, employee, or other person otherwise paid by an acting as an agent of the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or any successor agency thereto, or any division thereof, or any officer, employee, or other person otherwise paid by or acting as an agent of the United States Department of Homeland Security, or any successor agency thereto, who is charged with enforcement of the civil provisions of the Immigration and Nationality Act." And so with that, going up even a higher level, for our purpose as a board, and we know one of our charges is to issue policy, and policy is something that helps to govern the district, and we know the policies that we put in place are for, most importantly, the children in our district. And I do not think anyone would disagree that our primary, our priority for all of us is to ensure that all of the children in our district are safe, and that we are here to guide all of the children in our district. And this policy is one example of that. So I don't want us to get lost in the granular details of pieces to lose sight of that. What we are striving to do here is to continue to practice in ensuring that all of our students are safe in our district. And so at the end of the day, persons may view it this way or that way, but I want to ensure we all are speaking of the same language. And so with that, after robust discussion, I am going to call for a vote. And I'm going to do a roll call vote, please, if we may. Amani?
Mr. Gagnon?
Yes.
Mr. Goldman?
No.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Nasserella?
Yes.
Ms. Merriman?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas Farquharson?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. Now let us proceed to Policy 1900, School Security and Safety. And so again, this was brought before us before as a first reading. We are viewing it now as a second reading, followed by a vote. Any comments or questions with this policy? We do, thank you so much, because we did have them motioned separately. So yes, seeking a motion with respect to Policy 1900, School Security and Safety, for us to accept this as a second and final reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Shannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Latoya. Now we'll have discussion. I'll ask again, any question or comments with said policy on the floor? All right, seeing none, we shall... Is that a finger to yes?
Well, no, it's just, yeah, I was going to just say, again, it just seems like an unnecessary policy, because it's stating things that I would assume are already in our process and procedures. It's just highlighted for immigration, but it's, I'm just repeating myself, so.
Duly noted. Any other thoughts or comments suggestions with respect to the policy on the floor? With that, we'll proceed to a vote. Amani, a roll call vote again, please.
Sure.
Yes.
Mr. Goldman?
Nope.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Nasserella?
Yes.
Ms. Merriman?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas Farquharson?
Yes.
Mrs. Yakaloff?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you. Now moving on, and rather seeking a motion that is proposed by Lorna Thomas-Farquharson, Jason Gagnon, that the Board of Education accept as a second and final reading the following revised policy, which was reviewed by the Board Policy Subcommittee, that being Policy 5560, Restorative Practices Response. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Latoya. Discussion. And so once again, this came before us, and yes, please, Jason.
So this one should be pretty familiar to us, because we passed it largely as it exists right now, only a few weeks ago, on a six-to-one vote. And the revision we're talking about is on page 13, and while it's a minor revision, I think it's a meaningful revision. It really calls out, one, it was drafted in response to a lot of robust discussion we had at the table at the time, but also it calls out the very origins, the very foundation of what restorative practice is, as well as acknowledges where we as a district have kind of historically fallen short. So it's again, it's a call-out for when we get data reported to us, which was a big issue for all of us at this table, that we wanted the data, we wanted to be able to see how this is going, that we wanted to make sure that we were getting data that really focused on those issues. And so we added the language, including for students of color and students with disabilities in recognition of historical disparities. And so that's what's before us.
Thank you, Jason. Latoya?
Yep. I wrote down what I wanted to say, so I'm just going to share it here. So just as we're thinking about this tonight, I really want to just kind of share from my heart what this policy means, not just for our schools, but our community, and the broader movement towards justice in education. I also want to lift up, because I don't think I did in our last meeting, that as a school leader who was a dean of students, I reduced suspension by 86% by using restorative practices in place of traditional punitive systems. This policy is more than an update to discipline procedures, it's an intentional act of repair across the nation. We've witnessed decades of harm caused by exclusionary discipline practices, suspensions, expulsions, and zero tolerance policies that have disproportionately impacted students of color and students with disabilities. These patterns are not coincidental. They are the byproducts of structural racism and systemic inequities that have contributed to the school-to-prison pipeline and ultimately to mass incarceration. By adopting restorative practices, we've chosen a different path, and we're shifting from punishment to accountability, and from exclusion to inclusion, and disconnection to healing. This policy offers students the opportunity to reflect, to take responsibility, and repair harm in ways that strengthen relationships instead of severing them. It gives educators tools to respond with empathy and structure, and provides families with a sense of partnership. The amendment, the language amendment that we're proposing to explicitly name and address the disparities impacting students of color and students with disabilities ensures that our values of equity and belonging are not just words, but they're written into policy. This allows us as a board and a district to put action behind our allyship and to stand 10 toes down in our commitment to anti-racism and the dismantling of oppression. With 80% of public education teachers being white, unconscious bias is inevitable. And I'm not saying that of white people today in 2025 are responsible for systemic racism, but white-bodied people are responsible for helping to fix it. Beyond the moral imperative, restorative practices are fiscally responsible. They reduce suspensions, expulsions, and long-term disciplinary consequences that often translate into court involvement and for too many, incarceration. Every student we keep in school and connected to the community represents not only a life redirected, but millions, millions, y'all, in taxpayer dollars saved over time through reduced incarceration costs, improved graduation rates, and healthier communities. I also want to acknowledge that some might feel an apprehension about the role of our school resource officers and the perception that this policy excludes them. And I do understand that concern deeply. I believe this is an opportunity, not a limitation. We have restorative justice-trained officers here in West Hartford and a police chief who values these principles. Together, we can take this moment to model what true community partnership looks like by engaging our West Hartford Police Department in restorative dialogue and community circles outside of the schools. We can help heal longstanding wounds of distrust between law enforcement and our black and brown communities. An example of this is when I was a dean of students and I brought restorative practices, before I could help SROs re-envision their role, I had to have them sit in circle with kids in community to address the long, years and years and years of historic harm. We can't just move forward and say, well, we're not like this. We have to address the wound, heal it, and then envision a path forward. And so I think with us allowing our police officers to facilitate those conversations, to also lead our communities in restorative justice training, right? West Hartford PD could be leading restorative justice training at community spaces out here with the police chief, helping parents learn these skills. Doesn't have to happen inside of the schools. Also, we can think about how to include them in restorative practices as community building and prevention. So while they might not be able to be involved in the disciplinary part of restorative justice as students consequence, if they're in our schools and part of our community, how do we embed them into the fabric of the community with the building community and school climate and culture? Imagine the message is sent when our schools, our police, and our residents come together in shared learning, hosting community restorative justice trainings, leading harm repair dialogues, and modeling how accountability and compassion coexist. That's the kind of leadership that transforms systems and builds the kind of community we can all be proud of. Ultimately, by voting to pass this amended policy, we're saying that West Hartford is ready to lead, we're ready to reimagine justice, build stronger schools, and offer the state a model that reflects both our values and our vision. And I just want to say for myself as a board member and as a person who's here, I am, you know, a West Hartford Board of Education member, but I am also proud to say that I consider myself to be a woman of God. And I feel like in the times that we are in, it's imperative that we don't just say we love our neighbor, but we show it with action. We see humans as redeemable, and we see them having the dignity that we're all born with. So thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Ethan?
So I'm the one who voted six-to-one for the reasons Latoya referred to. I think, go sit down, six lines, restorative practices shall not include the involvement of a school resource officer or other law enforcement officials. If it didn't have that, I actually, I liked restorative practice after I've heard about it. I think it's healthy, but I think it has to be inclusive, and you can't do it without one group. So if we added them in, I'd be good, but we're, not our call. And I tried to take it out as a policy adjustment, but I guess lawyer said no. So anyways, I just think we should have everybody and be inclusive, especially if we're talking about restorative, and that's not happening here for no fault of anybody's.
Bridgette?
Yes. Sorry, I was just curious, if it's not, like, where is it not inclusive? Just curious, like, where the wording is? Maybe I missed it?
Restorative practices shall not include the involvement of any school resource officer or other law enforcement official.
Oh, but, so it's inclusive to all the students, just not to all the people?
Yeah, the first paragraph is, it's coming, I believe, from the state, and it's indicating that you, schools are not supposed to have our school resource officers involved in the restorative practices unless there's an actual crime. And I think, in general, I think we're all in agreement with Ethan that, you know, that's an unfortunate exclusion. It's outside of, you know, the guidance, we didn't make that up.
I would just stress, it's not just guidance, it's state law. So the state statute explicitly has that phrasing, so our hands are tied in respect to that. But I think we all can appreciate where Ethan's coming from, but in terms of the letter of the law, this is the way it has to be.
That's fine. I just thought it wasn't including.
No, but it's helpful that you brought it up, because I think that's the point of clarity.
Okay, perfect. I was like, is it missing a group of students or something? Sorry. Thank you.
Please do not apologize. That is why you were here. We need to hear your voice so we receive your questions. So thank you very much. Latoya?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of, you know, address that. I, just to give some context, and again, I know I've said this before, but like this, you know, just even lifting up this policy came from a lot of the black and brown student union and black and brown community members and advocates. And I think, again, when we think about the history of harm here, again, it's not West Hartford PD, you know, today who might have caused harm and distrust between police officers and communities, but because we haven't addressed that yet, and the people who advocated for this policy are members of those communities who are still right now experiencing that harm. In some schools in Connecticut, right now, school resource officers are not operating the way that our school resource officers are. I think that's the thing. I do, and then in some schools, there are teachers who are abdicating their responsibilities and creating a bad relationship with the SROs, because they're calling them in to manage their classrooms, and that's not fair for them. They're not there for that reason. And so I do, you know, I can understand, though, that it would have been helpful to allow districts to make their own decision about that. The thing is, again, because we're operating in a space where there is a lot of structural racism, allowing an open playing field like that might not yield the result of equity that we need. I do think that because it's a new policy, we can kind of see how things are, see how we can connect with our West Hartford PD and build restorative justice practices within the community, and then maybe we go back as a community to the state and talk about what this language should be. So, I mean, I think those are just some thoughts I have around how to try to get around that and at least just see what we can do.
The one question I had, and it's, there's no one in the room who can answer it, is, I could have seen it if they said they should be excluded in certain cases, defined, judge the school judgment, but to exclude them totally, it just rubs me the wrong way.
Claire?
It does specify where they should be included, when it involves violence or constitutes a crime. So if it's not violence and it's not a crime, the student, I think, has a right, depending on how they see a police officer, to be able to have a restorative circle that doesn't have to go against and say, no, no, I don't want a police officer in here, or I do want a police officer. It just makes that point moot, that it's not a crime, it's not violent, and now we can, as a community, work together to fix the harm. The resource officers we have have very strong relationships with the kids, they're seen as a friend, they give a good vision of police work to the students in the school. Not every kid feels as close to the SRO as other kids. You can't have a relationship with that many kids at one time, but it depends on their history. It depends on what their family has had interactions with police. So you change the environment when you bring a law enforcement officer, you might change the amount of honesty that they want to share. There's a lot of things. So I agree that if it's not violent and it's not a crime, that the child should have that not present, the police officer not present, because they did not break a law that the police need to be involved in.
Well, I don't see school resources officers having to be involved in only crimes. And I think if you want to build the trust, I'm sorry, well, I would say also, I would add, the one thing is, if a student didn't want SRO there, then that's fine, but we're saying completely they're not involved. I think if you're going to build the trust, you've got to start, and the school system should be able to judge.
Gail?
Thanks. Yeah, I have a lot of trouble with this policy as well. I do understand, you know, the idea of restorative justice, and I do think that there are some positives. As we've been told here several times, that, you know, the district is already practicing this practice, yet we haven't really seen any changes as far as I am aware in the numbers of, that we're trying to improve by using this practice. So that makes me first question, you know, use of this practice in trying to reduce certain behavioral issues. I do, like I stated last time, I'll just state one more time, I have a problem with the policy that's mandated by the state for every single district of this type of nature where we can't, you know, change, like Ethan wanted, one sentence. It doesn't, I don't think, you know, a policy like this fits every single district in the state without really being able to modify anything that would work better for us. I also am concerned that there are no guardrails on this policy. I think it could be used the way it's intended. I think it could be used in different ways, and that bothers me as well. We do, like I men- We do, like I mentioned last time, here our teachers complain, call the time of behavioral issues in the classroom, and, you know, I, I think that this policy may help in some circumstances, I think it could make things worse in other circumstances. As far as the data that Latoya provided regarding the state results on behavioral issues and expulsions and suspensions, when I tried to look through that data, you know, it's really, that data's not really been dissected, it's, it's numbers, and it's very hard to tell, based on the data that I looked at, what actually is going on in every one of these cases. I mean, I think that you really have to do a deep dive into the data to be able to say whether there truly is something going on here that's inappropriate, or, or, or there isn't. I'm not saying that there is or there isn't, I, I myself don't know, and I'm not sure how well that data's been looked at. So, in conclusion, I mean, I, I do think that there are some positives in having this type of policy, but I, I think in, in the way the policy's written, and for all the reasons that have been discussed here, that there's too many big questions on it, and I, I won't be able to support it the way it's written.
Latoya?
I just want to, I do want to clarify, though, that we did vote to pass the policy already, and so today, we're voting on language specifically around addressing disparities with students of color and students with disabilities. So I just want to clarify in terms of what we're voting on. We already passed the policy, so tonight's about students of color and students with disabilities.
And I, I just want to respond to that. Yes, I, I believe that I did vote to pass this on the last time, but obviously, there's been a lot more discussion about this, and there's been a lot more things that have sort of come to light since then. So, I, I am not voting against it because of that particular addition, I'm voting against it because of all of the things that sort of have come up since then.
I get it, but that's what we're voting on tonight. I just want to clarify.
We're voting on the whole policy.
With, just with that amendment, but we already voted on the policy, we're voting with that amended language.
Can, can I ask clarification?
Yes.
Because it's news to me. If we voted, and I really won't, voted no, then the policy would be in effect without the tracking? Is that what we're saying?
No, it would just be that the language that's been added would, would not stand in the policy. So you did pass the policy.
So voting no says, you still have the policy, just without the additional language?
Correct.
And so, again, any other questions or comments? Claire?
So, we passed the policy as it stands, except for what is written in blue, which says, "including for students of color and students with disabilities in recognition of historical disparities." That is what we're voting on today.
Correct. And so, again, the policy already is in practice, and as Claire just read, the language that she referenced is what we are voting on, adding to the existing policy.
So, can I just clarify? Because when we have other policies that we've added or subtracted language to, and then we come back and vote on them, like even some of the policies that were discussed here before, we're not voting just on the language in blue, we're voting on the whole policy. I, I just want to.
So, I can, I can see how I could, so thank you for the question. So if we recall, and pardon, I don't recall the exact date, it was a meeting, I believe, we had in September, when we had some policies that came before us to vote on. And as with many policies, there are ones that would have us to be compliant with state statutes, and there was, therefore was encouraged for us to accept said policy. However, there was robust discussion about the language of the policy, and about possibly how to amend it, to change it, to add, to subtract. And so with that, instead of not voting on the policy at all, which would then have us not compliant with state laws, we collectively voted on the policy, and therefore then, the next time we came together, there was, and it was presented to us as a first reading, to add said language that we are looking at today. And so, again, the policy originally was put in place, and then we had come before us as a first reading to add the lines that were read aloud already to the existing policy. And that was from the last meeting we had. And when that was presented, although there were different thoughts and comments shared, there was no suggestion of any substantive changes to said language, and therefore it came before us today as a second reading. And it was motioned and seconded. So where we are right now, again, is with the existing policy, voting on whether or not we should add the language that refers to, and that specifically says, and let me pull it up once again, I'm going to read the paragraph. "So the Board further directs the superintendent or designate to collect and maintain data regarding types of challenging behavior addressed using the restorative practices response policy and data concerning the implementation of restorative practices." That's already in the existing policy that we have on, that we are practicing now. "The Board further directs the superintendent or designate to provide semi-annual updates to the Board on such data disaggregated," and right now, I'm going to reference what is on the floor to add, "including for students of color and students with disabilities in recognition of historical disparities." And then now, going back to language already in the policy, "in a manner that complies with laws governing student confidentiality." So again, what we have before us only pertains to this line item to add, "including for students of color and students with disabilities in recognition of historical disparities." So if a majority does not vote in favor of that, the policy still is as is, just with the exception of that line item.
Sorry, I just want to clarify, I mean, when I vote on any policy, like even the ones we voted on earlier today, I'm voting on that entire policy, for example, 1240, I'm voting on the entire policy plus the addition of the fourth paragraph. I'm not just voting on the fourth paragraph, I'm voting on the whole policy.
Well, that's why this is an amendment.
And I, I do under, I do understand your point, that if it were not, this other policy on restorative practices, if it were not to pass, we would revert to the policy that we had before. But I still feel that we're voting on the entire policy plus the addition of that language, as we do on any other policy.
I, I can see why, slight difference, though. We're voting to amend. So when you amend, that just means there's an existing policy, we want to adjust it. We're voting on an amendment, we're not voting on a totally new policy. If it were a totally new policy, then what you described would be as it would be.
Well, 1240 is also amended, and that's an amended policy where we had it before, and now we added a fourth paragraph. And, and, in my opinion, and again, I defer to other people here who know more, that I didn't just vote on the fourth paragraph of 1240, I voted on the entire policy plus the amendment.
So, there are times when I respectfully hear what you're saying, and I respectfully receive what you're saying. Nonetheless, with where the policy is, what is on the floor is an amendment, which is in regard to just that line item. So if for some reason, there is not a majority in favor of amending the policy to include that line item, the policy still remains as is. So bottom line of where we are is with respect to, do we want to add the line item that refers to "including students of color and students with disabilities in recognition of historical disparities," or do we not want to have that in the policy? When it comes time for a vote, which will soon happen, that is what we are voting on. Claire?
I just want to say, I applaud the Board and Latoya for not taking the policy as it stood. There was a robust conversation, and we decided that if we passed it as is, it would be in place in case something came up. We were told that we had two meetings following the vote, that we could add an amendment, it went to the Policy Board, that amendment was gone over by the policy members and the attorney, and now it's come back for a second reading, at which time we will vote on this. I'm very proud of everything that the district does, I think we're a great district, but this specific area of disparity among disciplinary actions on students of color and students with disability has been a mark on some of the history that I'm very proud of, but that was a mark in an area where we fell down and we were brought to light that this is, is not the same percentages, and we need to do something about it. And this shows our commitment to making right what was not good data in our favor. And so I'm very proud of the district, I'm proud of the Board for adding this amendment, and also for Latoya bringing it forward.
Other questions, or, yes, Ethan?
So, I have questions about the, what we're actually doing. Do we have a current statistics on these numbers?
We, oh, sorry.
I, I, please, go right ahead.
By statistics, you mean previous data related to disciplinary infractions?
Yeah, because if we're going to track it, we want to know that we're improving. We should have milestones, and we should have an existing database that says, here's where we've been, here's where we're going to, as well as an objective of where we want to be.
And that, that.
No, I, I, but that's why I want to see what we have now, because we should have something on the table.
And so, yes, well received, and what, the data that we do have, coupled with what we are going to continue to receive, will help us assess where we are, and more importantly, where we want to go. So your point is well taken, we certainly do have data, but this policy is allowing us to be even more intentional with the data, and how we're able to hold ourselves accountable.
I would just like to see where we've been, where we're planning to go, and tracking it, because I may have seen it, but.
Yeah, if I may, I mean, because I was going to offer this earlier, but it's, we've been using restorative practices before the state made it a mandate to have a policy, and it's my hope that our usage of restorative practices will certainly help to improve us as a district. But what I was going to offer is, even if it doesn't, I do feel that the inclusion of restorative practices is additive and a benefit to how we approach student discipline. So that student discipline isn't all by itself merely transactional for a student. You do something wrong, you get this consequence, and that's the end of it. I think it is much better, you do something wrong, you receive this consequence, and then you make some repairs for the wrong that happened, and, and you have a reset with, within your community to those, so that, so that you can go forward. It's, it's like if I had an argument with my wife, and we woke up in the morning, and we never talked about it, versus, we talked about it, we processed it, and we were able to move past it. One situation's going to be much more healthy for us in terms of our climate and our environment. So, so I, I respect, you know, all the other conversation that's happening, but, you know, I just wanted to offer, I do hope, at the end of the day, that this helps to inform and improve our, the equity of our student discipline, but even if it doesn't, out of the gate, or for some other reason, I do still see it as an important practice that we, that we have in the district.
No, I'm good with restorative practices, I'm good with tracking it. My concern is, if we just have data, and we don't know what we're measuring, where we're going, or, not where we're going, but where we want to go, and how we're doing against that, then we just have data. And I think it's important to set the guidance of, or the objective or the goals. And I frankly would have been interested in seeing what it was, and how, and are we comparing just against ourselves?
No, we will, we will be providing you with.
The region, or?
Some, some kind of a, some kind of a presentation, and that's, it's going to be an enhancement from what we've done in, in compliance with the new expectations, and we can, we can take, you know, we can certainly take that to heart in terms of, what is it, what kind of information, how, what information is helpful to the Board, and what information, you know, importantly, is helpful to us to inform our practice, but then how do we share that out publicly?
And also, if we could do goals, just.
All right, we have goals.
We'll hit them, but.
I'll share those, that five-year plan with you again, so we have, we have all that.
Other thoughts, and I appreciate, Ethan, all that you're sharing, and I appreciate you mentioning as well, just not wanting the data, the numbers, because it's always important. Anyone can receive numbers, but it's how you interpret those numbers, and the qualitative information that goes behind that. So thank you for emphasizing that. And so we have many opportunities to receive information via presentations and upcoming meetings about what is gathered, but again, bringing us back to where we are at this time, with respect to policy 5560, restorative practices. We'll ask one last time if there are any other comments or questions before we proceed to a vote. Seeing Nanamani one last time, a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gagman?
Yes.
Mr. Goldman?
If it's numbers, yes.
Dr. Harris?
No.
Mrs. Nessarella?
Yes.
Ms. Merriman?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas Farquharson?
Yes.
Mrs. Yagaloff?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you, and thank you all collectively for your voices in these discussions. Now, moving on to Routine Matters Financial Report. Seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the financial report for the period ending September 30th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ethan. Discussion, so Barbara, so glad to see you, thank you so much, and Jason, I believe you are giving the report today.
That is correct.
Right.
So this is actually our first report of the new school year, I believe the last report kind of ended, wrapped up last year. So, we start out with the general fund, and as of September 30th, 2025, the projections, which are in line with, you'll recall the budget and the revised budget that came back to us from Town Council, we knew that we were going to have a deficit at some point. We're now showing that deficit, we're projecting a deficit of $675,000 at fiscal year end. You'll recall, this was the impetus for taking the $700,000 that we had in additional state funding from last year, and putting that in the non-lapsing fund, which I think will be followed right after this report, we'll talk about what we want to do with that. But the main point is that this is an expected shortfall, this is not a surprise, and anything this year, this early, we don't really have a lot of surprises, which is good, we don't have a lot of bills or information at this point, so it's a pretty standard, everything's in line. I just know that when you read that in the, in the report, that the 675 stands out, but that, again, was expected based on, on the budget and the revised budget coming back from the town last year. Overall salary counts are projected to be $50,000 over budget at this time, with much of that variance due to $100,000 in anticipated teacher salaries, basically coming from the net effect of six more elementary classrooms than budgeted. Benefits at this time are within appropriations. Purchase services are predicted to be an overage of $25,000 at this time. Supplies and materials are within budget. Again, we have the non-lapsing account with $700,000 rolled over from last year's budget. Grants right now are continuing to be received and funded, so we've not seen any adverse impacts at this time from anything going on at the federal level, shutdown-related or otherwise. As of September 30th, the district has received grant awards and carry-forward authorizations totaling just about $3.7 million. Of this, $3.4 million is available for public school use. Special Programs Fund is expected to earn approximately $63,000 in interest income at this time. And Nutritious Services Fund experienced an operating deficit in September 2025. Daily student lunch count is down, it usually is down in September. I admitted at our meeting that I was guilty of contributing to the deficit in September, because student lunches actually increased throughout the year. Apparently, we all start off with the goal of, of making lunches and, you know, providing them, and then, you know, that goes out the window around October. On the less, less upbeat news, students, so students who qualify for free meals continue to receive that lunch, but the, the benefit for reduced meal students, so you'll recall that was being funded at the state, they were receiving free lunches, reduced meals are now going back to a rate of 40 cents per meal. So I'm sure Barbara can fix anything that I misstated, or answer any questions that are beyond me.
Thank you, Jason, for that report. Barbara, anything else to add to that?
No, I think Jason did a great job.
Likewise. Teammates, any questions or comments with the financial? Teammates, any questions or comments with the financial report that we have received?
I just have one question. Can you clarify, I think you said, Jason, we had six additional classrooms. Where are, can you just, where are those classrooms?
Sure. It was six classrooms and they were all at the elementary school levels. The exact six, oh, I'm sorry, it was teacher salary. It was the question about the $100,000 specifically. So it was the net effect of adding those six classrooms. And then there was saving seen from hiring of other positions lower than predecessors, so it was able to offset some of that cost.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none with the motion on the floor regarding the financial report, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. Thank you, Jason. Ethan, you're part of that committee as well. Thank you. And Barbara, thank you so very much. But you're not going anywhere because we now, we're going to new business where we have appropriation of non-lapsing unexpendited education funds accounts to the fiscal year 2025, 2026. Therefore, seeking a motion that the Board of Education adopt a revised 2025, 2026 budget.
Pardon me. Okay. All right. That's not your fault. Ethan, I heard you first and then I was looking at you. I want to start reading again. Pardon me. That's all right. Seeking a motion that the Board of Education adopt a revised 2025, 2026 budget of 214051800 to make sure we get it correct by appropriating funds available in the non-lapsing unexpendited education funds account and making the following modification to the previously adopted 2025, 2026 Board of Education budget with it increasing out-of-school tuition, the out-of-school district tuition in the amount of $700,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Shannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jason. Discussion.
If I can offer something, and then I'll certainly turn it over to Barb for her expert discussion. But as you just heard in the financial examiner's report, we have a planned, projected deficit in the general fund and, and that there is an awareness, we included within the financial examiner's report, the fact that we do have $700,000 in the non-lapsing fund. But just for clarity, that $700,000 does not live in your budget as yet. It is, it is set aside. So the whole purpose of this motion is for you to be able to take that $700,000 and incorporate it into your general fund. And as we discussed last year, we would have a transparent public meeting where we said where we would want those funds to specifically go. So as you'll recall last year, when the budget that you sent forward to the town council was reduced by 1.4 million, we took the entirety of that $1.4 million cut from the out-of-district tuition line with the expectation that we would be having surplus in last year's money that we could carry over through a non-lapsing fund to fill a hole in that line item this year. So that is essentially, in broad strokes, the explanation of the motion that is before you. And I know that Barb can talk about the specific costs and, you know, how we got here and, and what has changed within the state budget last year and this year that, that speak to why we will anticipate this specific value of deficit that we're currently facing. But none of this, just to go on the record again, this was all part of a plan that we started last year with this as the intended outcome.
Thank you for describing. Yes, Ethan.
This is a process question. My memory from last year was that the $700,000 was going to be applied to the budget, but it sounds like it's being applied now as opposed to when we passed the budget.
So you passed, so it's being applied for this year. You passed last, you, you, you passed this budget last year.
Right.
So what you're doing now, that the $700,000 is actually there, is you're, you're just rolling it into this year's budget. But you, but we have to have a vote and we have to have your input and your agreement as to where you want that $700,000 to go. So the, so the plan had been, as we said from last year, we, we took the money last year when we amended the budget that you passed. We took it from out-of-district tuition with the intent that once we were on the new set of books, we'd come in and put the money back in.
So we, okay. All right. So we realized that there would be, need to be an increase. I thought it was being applied before, but that's my fault, so.
Gail.
I have two questions. My first question is, how much money is in the non-lapsing fund total?
Sure. There's currently $700,000, and that was put in the non-lapsing fund on, after June 30th, 2025.
Oh, so there's no other money in there?
There is no other money. Back in COVID, there had been some funding that was put in a non-lapsing fund, but that had subsequently been used for transportation and other needs in those near years.
Okay. And then I, I questioned on the motion that was made, because I wasn't listening close enough. Are we determining exactly where this money is going or is it just sort of a general?
Yeah, your motion is to put it into the out-of-district tuition line, which is the, which is the specific line, you know, for the public's benefit more so than the board. When the town council approves a number, and that number is less than what the board asked for, the town council doesn't get to say where you cut money from. You have the line item authority. So last year, your vote was to receive the cut from the town council's budget and, and subtract it specifically from a singular line, out-of-district tuition.
So is that the motion on the table now?
And the motion on the table is to put the, is to put money back into that line based on the planned cut.
Got it. Thanks.
Ethan.
Just to make sure I got this right. As I recall, a million four was cut. $700,000 from us, $700,000 was the town saying if we needed it, they would be there. So it's not in the non-lapsing, but it's some lapsing, it's one of their funds.
Correct. We were, we were cut a total of 1.4 million. We knew that if the state money did not come through, the town, the town had made a commitment to, to make up half of that 1.4 million for us from a town surplus.
Okay.
State money has come through and there have been other machinations that, that make it such that we, we're in a position where we only need to fill a $700,000 gap.
But we still need the $700,000.
But we do need it because we're showing, I mean, as this, as this financial examiner report shows, we're showing an anticipated deficit right now of 675,000, but.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments regarding the financial? No, nope, regarding the motion on the floor regarding the non-lapsing unexpendited education funds account. All right, seeing none. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Now moving on to adoption of educational specifications for partial roof replacement at Bravon Elementary School. As we have teammates come to the table, Ms. Ruat, thank you very much again. Seeking a motion that the Board of Education adopt the following educational specifications. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Shannon. Discussion. Passing it to our, all right, our table mates here, starting with Julio.
All right. Good evening again. So as you may recall, last year, the board initially approved this educational specification on December 5th, 2023. However, during that state's grant review process, they've come back and requested some updates on the grant proposal. So I will turn it over to Bob, who can walk us through the specifics of that.
Sure. So in past years, we've been able to, we, part of the grant process is developing this educational specification, which talks about the, the building and its use and gives some details about that. And typically, we've, you just, we, we didn't have to provide an exact square footage of roof we were going to replace because we hadn't designed the roof at this point, at that point, or evaluated it completely with an architect. So unfortunately, they're coming back to us and saying that we need to have the exact square footage to, in this document to match all the other documents that we have. So we're coming back to redo this document to get the correct square footage into the building, into the document, and also to provide the updated roof key, which was provided by the architect during the design process. So that's the change that we're looking to approve to this evening.
Thank you. And if I may ask or presume that needless to say, they need a new roof.
Uh, yes, they do.
Thank you.
Can I?
Yes, Shannon.
I just, I want to say thank you. As a parent whose child just left Bravon, I saw firsthand the need for this, so thank you very much for making it happen.
Sure.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none with the motion on the floor, oh.
Sorry, just one quick question. Is there any different costs to this than what was originally presented to us?
No, we're still estimating out about 1.8 million for the cost of the roof.
Was that the original?
That, that's the original, yeah. Roofing has been pretty stable through all this construction inflation stuff, so it's been pretty consistent, so.
Okay, thank you.
Claire.
If I remember, this is the membrane, the, the Duralast, or I don't know if it's Duralast, but do you anticipate energy savings as well from the new roof?
Yes, so we will add additional insulation as part of this roof and also additional drainage. So it does build up the roof to get more insulation. It also is a, typically, we put on a 30-year roof versus a 20-year. This, the roof that was on there now is a 20-year warranty roof, which lasted 25. This will be a 30-year roof, so.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none with the motion on the floor, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Now moving on to staff communications and reports, where we shall receive our superintendent's report. Passing it over.
Thank you so much. Well, here we are in November. We've seen the fall weather join us, right? Getting a little cool and crisp out there. We've also undergone daylight savings, which has been great just as a safety measure for our kids when we're coming in. And even early, when I'm coming in, I can't believe how bright it is, does make for earlier evenings and our athletic events for our kids. So I'll just, you know, ask for caution and safety as kids are going home in the evenings. And November also brings a number of themed celebrations. We heard in public comment, someone sharing about some of our Native American Heritage Month activities, so I was very excited. Reminder, we have World Kindness Week coming up and be very happy to celebrate Veterans Day on November 11th. So I am very excited to share some celebrations that are happening across our schools. Conard High School has recently participated in the daffodil project, which was also celebrated here at the town, I think, this past weekend. It's a, it's a national effort that aims to plant 1.5 million daffodils to honor the equivalent number of children who died during the Holocaust. So it's a very meaningful event, and it's great to have kids kind of engaged in that as an ongoing legacy. And kudos to Lindsay Tringali over, who brought the project to Conard. I want to congratulate three members of the class of 2027 within our open choice program. They're recipients of $6,000 scholarships that are provided by the ECMC Scholar Program, which not only provides financial support, but also mentoring to students in support of their entrance to post-secondary opportunities, both college and career. I want to throw a congratulations out to Hall Senior Eleanor Farquhar, who is Connecticut's Girl State winner. So if you are not familiar, Girl State's an annual leadership program for high school-aged young women hosted by the American Legion Auxiliary, and it focuses on the fundamentals of government and citizenship. So I'm trying to learn as the Connecticut winner. I think my understanding is that involves a trip down to DC. I'm trying to verify that with our, with our American League. To, to then be, to participate in Girls Nation, yes.
Girls Nation is a separate thing.
Separate thing?
Yeah.
All right.
The governor doesn't go to Girls Nation, just the senators. But, but it's still a really important position.
It's still a really big thing. Still, so years ago, we did have a Boy State winner that went down to, I guess, Boys Nation. So it's very cool, very cool. But congratulations to Eleanor nonetheless, that's outstanding. I want to thank the generosity of an anonymous community member donor that supported, I think you heard a little bit about it in our student reports. The THC Awareness and Prevention Program put on by Ms. Laura Stack called Johnny's Ambassadors is an extremely impactful and empowering presentation that was coordinated through the support of the West Hartford Prevention Partnership. And there was two different assemblies at Conard and Hall to accommodate the full student body. And then there was an evening program that, or an afternoon program that happened over at the West Hartford Community Center. Extremely well done. I spoken to some students about it and received very positive feedback. And there are efforts underway currently between our middle schools and the West Hartford Prevention Partnership to see if we can bring that this year to, to them. So great stuff. I want to share some great things going on at Cedric Middle School as part of an adjusted curriculum PE class in collaboration with the health program and our intensive academic students. Our teachers started a garden there a few years ago, and each year they expand on that garden. This year, they built a greenhouse to grow things over the winter, and they recently harvested 32 pounds of sweet potatoes that are currently being cured and will then be donated to the Cedric Middle School cafeteria to be cooked and used as part of our meal. So it's a great example of a number of things, and I'll share a few, few more things in upcoming reports about what we're doing kind of in support of that concept of farm-to-school. Because we do have a lot that is happening. Kudos to the 201 student runners that participated in the annual elementary cross-country run. It was held this year at Aiken Elementary in late October. Third graders run a half-mile and fourth and fifth graders run a mile, and we're very, very, very proud of our runners and their focus on fitness. I want to give a huge shout out to Ann McKernan and her entire staff for the coordination of professional learning for our secondary teachers around the topic of AI technology. And to some of the points that were being made earlier this evening, the entirety of our professional learning is being broached on a balanced approach, understanding that we do need to attend to the realities of what is in front of our children and at the same time, hold strong to those skills that we, that we value and how to integrate and how to provide, you know, we've already provided some guidance to students so that there's an expectation for them as to when something is, you know, does not have technology allowed because it's intended specifically for a purpose of what I would call, I've lost the phrase that we use, but absent technology, when things are going to be technology adjacent, when things are going to be technology inclusive, and kind of talking to students so, so that they have a clear picture of what expectations are. I want to give a shout out to Matt Mervis of Ed Advance, who was our keynote, and he talked about the benefits, impacts, and cautions of this rapidly evolving technology and the importance of educators' roles to support responsible and ethical use. And one of the key things he talks about is where we keep humans in the loop. Finally, schools are preparing for a host of different educational and community engagement activities to celebrate Veterans Day. This includes flag ceremonies, assemblies, guest speakers, breakfast and lunch celebrations, classroom visits, letter-writing projects, donation drives, and much, much more. So a huge thanks to the entirety of our veteran community and all of our military families. And lastly, just because it's coming up as questions, November ushers in one month from December. December brings our holiday break. And so folks want to know, on December 23rd, which this year is on a Tuesday, will we be following our traditional early release, you know, early release Wednesday schedule? And the answer to that is yes. We will follow an early release Wednesday on Tuesday, December the 23rd. I will make certain that that information is reflected on our websites and shared out with the community through the school newsletters. Pending any questions you might have, that's my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Teammates, any questions or comments regarding the superintendent's report we've received? Seeing none, thank you, thank you, thank you. Now moving on to staff reports and board discussions. Hello once again. We now have enrollment and class size analysis as of October the 1st, 2025. So welcome back again, Ms. Barbara Ruha, who will report.
Thank you. Good evening again. Thank you for the opportunity to share current year enrollment and class size data with you. I'll provide a brief overview of the report. It begins on page 24 of the board packet, and then I'd be happy afterward to answer any questions. The data in this report is as of October 1st, 2025. That's the official state measurement date for all Connecticut school districts. Please note, this information is still preliminary and that the final student counts may change slightly and continue, as they've continued to change over the month of October as well. As we look at overall enrollment for the district, we have 9,081 students as of October 1st. Of those, 8,655 are in district K through 12 students, with the balance being pre-kindergarten students, post-secondary students, and students who are outplaced due to their educational needs. Table 1 details system-wide enrollment by both school and grade. When we prepared our enrollment projection for the '25-'26 school year, we anticipated that enrollment would be relatively consistent with the '24-'25 school year. Actual enrollment indicates that on October 1st, we had 31 fewer students than the prior year and 37 fewer than projected, both a variance of 0.4%. The chart on the top of page 25 depicts the enrollment variance by grade level. You will see that it compares both the actual enrollment for current year versus the prior year and the actual enrollment for the current year versus what was projected for the school year. For those 37 fewer than projected that I mentioned on October 1st, that is the net effect of 48 additional elementary students, 31 fewer middle school students, and 54 fewer high school students than anticipated. Table 2 on page 28 provides a comparison of projected and actual enrollment by school and grade level. These charts detail how the variance of 37 students is spread amongst grades and schools. Projections at individual schools and grade levels have a lower level of accuracy than overall projection, as you can see by the variances noted. Enrollment projections are a key factor in determining staffing levels and class size, as shown in Table 3 on page 29. At the elementary level, the district has 202 sections with an average class size of 19.4 students. This average, while it may be higher than the '21-'22 school year and the '22-'23 school year, is less than the pre-pandemic level of 19.8 students in the '19-'20 school year. All elementary class sizes are within class guidelines with one exception, and in that case, additional support has been provided. At the middle school level, the average academic and unified arts class average, anywhere from 18.4 to 19.8 students. At the high school level, the core academic class average is 21.4 students at Conard and 21 at Hall High School. Detailed information on the number of sections per subject area, the average students per class, and the corresponding staffing levels can be found in Tables 4 through 6 for the middle schools and Tables 7 through 8 for the high schools. You will see that there are also some explanatory notes at the bottom of the high school tables. While this report provides information for the current school year, we're already looking ahead to the '26-'27 school year and long-term projections, and that information will be presented to the board in February of 2026. I know this was just, is a brief summary. If you have any questions, I'm happy to help.
Brief but thorough summary. Thank you very much. Teammates, any questions or comments regarding the information we have received? Claire.
I was just curious, in the high schools, when the enrollment's down, are you pretty much obligated to keep the course? I mean, I see some classes had six and 10, but if it's part of their plan of study and part of their goal towards graduation, I would hate to see them not getting high enough enrollment and then the class be canceled. How do we handle low enrollment in a high school course?
So it really depends upon the course. Generally speaking, when we see a low enrollment course, excuse me, and those figures come out, you know, I think the course selection happens sometime between December to January, and then we're finalizing those things into February and March and sometimes even a little bit later. There are certain courses, like one that comes up with frequency is AP Chinese. It's capstone in a sequence of courses. We've tried to protect that course. It can become a low enrollment, but it, you know, we try to protect that to be able to preserve the opportunity for students. Some of the other low enrollment courses at times can be typically very specialized. Perhaps they're falling within something specific to pupil services, or I'd have to look up some of the footnotes as to if there was a specific class that you were questioning. But we try to make those decisions, I think, to best answer your question upfront in the student, during the student registration process, where immediately following requests, when we see that a course has not had sufficient interest or looks like it's a single tenant and it's got a low count, we have to make a decision, are we going to preserve that course or not? Because the second step to that is then it schedules. And sometimes the issues of what else the student has asked for will take a course that might have been lower enrollment, lower interest, and all of a sudden, it creates conflicts in the schedule because other things the student wanted, you know, that if that course only has one opportunity in the day to meet, maybe the student's other selections don't allow for the student to take it, and so it didn't, we say, it didn't fill. And we don't, we don't like to cancel a course once we've already made the decision that it's going to run. We try to do that earlier on in the process and then talk to kids about what their second choice might be.
Other, Ethan, and then Latoya.
So the one exception, the one, you said there was one exception outside of the norm or outside the standard. What actions have been taken?
Yes. So that is at an elementary school, and there is now a...
That's great.
Yes, there is a teaching assistant supporting that grade.
Okay. Thank you.
Latoya.
Yeah, my question was kind of to that effect about the classes that have the 24, so a lot of the, a few of the fifth grade classes that have 24 students. Are there additional staff in there, paras, or?
No, your class size guidelines for fourth and fifth grade actually go to the 27, as was mentioned, so it's not necessarily, they're true that we would have a teaching assistant. There may be teaching assistants in certain classes by virtue of student individualized education programs or something like that, but not by design. In cases where we're exceeding the class size guidelines, and it's happening typically either right before the start of school to where we weren't able to break an extra section, that's where we have a policy where we will provide, we will hire a teaching assistant specifically to work within that grade level or within that class in order to support that larger number of kids.
Jason.
So again, on that one section, that's an exception. I think when we talked about it at the beginning of the year, you said to be keeping kind of a close eye on it and see how it's going. Do you have any feedback on how it's going?
That's such a setup. Anything I say now is going, it's going to be taken poorly by the other side. I will simply say that we have exceptional teachers at that school that are working exceptionally hard. It's obviously, you know, not our ideal. If we had had those class counts a little bit earlier on in the process, we would have liked to have broken that. We are, we did break a significant number of sections. I mean, we're six sections over budget right now, so it's the right thing, but it's a financial strain, and in an ideal world, you know, we would be providing even greater relief in that particular grade level. However, I'm very confident in the teachers. I have been out there to visit. I haven't been in the last three weeks or so, so I can't, I can't say that I've had my eyes on it. I did go out earlier on in September, but I keep tabs with the principal and things are going smoothly. But obviously, teachers are working hard, and it's not the ideal, so.
When we budget, can you remind me what we, what value we place on each additional section? What's the cost that we use to budget?
Yeah, generally speaking, we're using $100,000 per section to cover sort of like an average salary plus benefits.
And I will just add that Giulio's predecessor did leave the policy committee with a lot of resources that we were looking over as part of a review of class sizes.
Yes.
So that's still on the policy committee's agenda, and I suspect will be taken up when we sit a new board as well, so.
That's my understanding.
Other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, thank you so very much. Now moving on to approval of the minutes. Seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting of October the 21st, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ethan. Discussion or suggested edits. Seeing none, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. Thank you. Moving on now to information and reports. Board members, do we have any communications and reports from other organizations or any other comments to make? Claire.
I just want to shout out to WHCI TV is having their Birdhouse fundraiser this Saturday. Did you do a house? No?
I think there may be a Friends of Feeny house. I'm not 100% sure, but there's involvement.
Yeah, I think the count is, over 30 houses now are being done by local artists, and so it's to help the station. They do a whole lot of work for our schools and for broadcasting, town council, and Board of Ed, and it's a great way to support them.
All right. There's a flyer. Wonderful. Thank you. Any other comments or reports? Hearing or seeing none, moving on to future business. We have announcement of future meeting dates. Our next Board of Education meeting will be Tuesday, November the 18th, 2024, here at the Town Hall in room 314 at 6:00 PM. Again, that is Tuesday, November the 18th, 2024, here at the Town Hall.
Apologies, that's a typo. 2025.
Oh, and I'm repeating the edit. Pardon the error. Pardon me. Thank you so very much. That's why I was getting some of the looks as I was reading that. All right. Let me say that once again. Oh, boy, don't get me choked up, Jason. All right. Once again, with future business, we'll next come together on Tuesday, November the 18th, 2025, here in room 314 at the Town Hall at 6:00 PM. Once again, Tuesday, November the 18th, 2025, room 314 here at the Town Hall at 6:00 PM, followed by Tuesday, December the 2nd, 2025, room 314 at the Town Hall at 7:00 PM, those that will be here at that time. Followed again by Tuesday, December the 16th, 2025, here at the Town Hall, room 314 at 7:00 PM. Do we have a request for any future agenda items? Claire.
I just wanted to point out for the public that the Tuesday meeting is not a traditional board meeting with a full agenda of agenda topics, because it would, is there going to be a posted agenda, even though?
Yeah, we will still post an agenda, but you're right. It will be, it will be light on topics as the board will be doing its swearing in of new members, but also sort of gratitudes to those members who are departing.
Thank you for that note. And with that, we'll say, we know that of our team here, we just had an election, so do want to give congratulations to our teammate, Jason, who has, will continue on with the board for four years, and with Gail, who will continue on, but not in this sector, being a part of the town council, so congratulations to you. And as was referenced, at the next meeting on the 18th, you all will meet your new board members, so we certainly will welcome them as well. And so with that, any request for any future agenda items? Hearing or seeing none, do we have any visitors who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we do not have an executive order, and so therefore, seeking a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Ethan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Shannon. Meeting adjourned.